Susan, oh, we're reading.
What's the protocol if more people show up and we're not six foot distance?
Can we open? Are reminded of what it is and isn't, because we have a fairly full room here now. So Rule 15, facial coverings, except as otherwise provided in this rule, all individuals in Cordova must wear a mask, bandana, or other type of cloth protective covering over their nose and mouth when social distancing of at least six feet from another individual is not possible. Individuals under the age of four, individuals with trouble breathing, and individuals with a medical condition that prevents them from wearing a facial covering are exempt from this rule. Facial coverings need not be worn in the following circumstances: an individual is alone or within six feet of only family members of his or her household; an individual is eating or drinking in compliance with the State of Alaska Public Health mandates; or an individual is receiving lawful services that cannot be adequately performed while the service provider or the recipient is wearing a mask. So just remind, I'm not wearing my mask, got six feet of space around me, same for the audience, otherwise if you can't distance, keep a mask on. You ready?
Yep.
I'll call the regular city council meeting of March 17th, 2021 to order at 7:00 PM. If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Tom Baylor. Tom Baylor. Okay, absent, I guess. Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
And David Gleason.
Here.
That's a quorum of council.
Approval of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion.
I'd like to amend the agenda and eliminate item number 20 off of that.
Second.
Okay, we have, I'm gonna suggest another modification maybe, but let's take up this amendment as one discussion to your motion, Councilman Gleason.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of going over Helen's head on stuff. We have our two employees, Helen and the city clerk and the city manager, and there's a chain of command with the city, and it starts with Helen. And if we have a citizen's complaint, it comes to council, we bring that to Helen, and it moves down from there. She goes to whatever department, delivers the complaint, and it gets dealt with. Once we deliver it to Helen, it's out of our hands, it's in her hands, and she is the city manager, and that's her job. So that's why I would like to get that removed.
Okay, to your second, Councilman Allison.
Yeah, along the same lines, I consider it more of a point of order, I guess. Council, if we want to have a discussion on strategic planning for the citywide, then we should have a strategic planning. If we want to decide on increasing the budget or reducing the budget on a department, then that's certainly our prerogative. That's what we do as a council. If we don't like the laws that are out there, then we can certainly change the laws, adding or subtracting them. That's our purview. It's not our responsibility, or less than responsibility, but it's not our position to be overriding the manager in their dealing with the city. We decide the budget, the city manager is hired to deal with that. We just had the city manager's evaluation, which was perfectly fine, and if we've got issues with the city manager, then certainly we should take those up with the city manager. But we're not here to tell the manager how to run the departments, other than funding. So.
Okay, I anticipate some discussion on this, so I'll go in, I'll call on council, and I'm gonna start with the two councilmen that proposed this for the agenda. Councilman Gard.
Okay, as far as not being in the council's purveillance, if you look at Section 2-4 of the City Charter, the Council Powers, line four, this is, are the things that all fall under the council's powers: to inquire into the conduct of any office, department, or agency in the city and investigate municipal affairs. I don't think this discussion is about an investigation. This isn't about personnel issues. This is just a discussion about the department. Doesn't have to be the only department we look at. I mean, it's a good idea to look at the function of how the whole city works, but it is within our powers to do this. And it's not stepping over the top of Helen or any of that. It's just looking at what's going on, getting it out there in front of the public, and saying whether or not we support the manager's actions and stuff in this.
Okay, that sounds like opposed to the amendment. Councilman Meyer.
Yeah, you know, I was one that brought this forward, and I know some people are getting hung up on the individual points that were brought up in the memo for the concerns, but, you know, those are just some of the things that came up that really kind of escalated this, in my view, that it needed to be talked about, and just talked about in a high-level position. I'm not proposing that we have to go through each one of these and come up with solutions and micromanage the whole thing. We can have a discussion, and I think it's completely appropriate in our powers and responsibility to do so. I don't think that this has to be looked upon negatively, even though that it has been, but I think this is our responsibility as council to do things. And I'm prepared to go and discuss about these things more, but what's really concerning to me is what I've been hearing about people is that they don't feel comfortable talking about these things in public and putting their names on it. And as a representative, I think it's my job to put my name on these things for the people. It's not about us individually, it's not about anyone individually in the department, it's just about looking at it a whole. And the discussion about the police department has come up, so I think that we should finish the conversation and look at moving forward. And we can do this all in a positive way, doesn't have to be negative, but it's completely appropriate, and I think it would be really disingenuine and really taking out the voice of citizens that have brought this, you know, that have mentioned these things. If we just take it off the agenda, then it's just sweeping things under the rug. And I don't know how people move forward if we can't even discuss it. Taking it off the agenda, I think, would be sweeping it under the rug. And if that's how council votes, that's how it votes, but I'm prepared to have tough conversations and make it positive and move forward. I think that's what we can do as a community, doesn't have to be pick one side, where we're all on one side together, so let's move forward and let's at least discuss it. I would say some of the questions at the bottom of the memo talking about future discussions are answers that we need to talk about as a council, how we feel about looking at each department, what we want to process to do. I think all of those things can be discussed, and we're talking about this at a high level and what we expect. And I don't think that we're going over the city manager. I did speak with her, and she knew that I was proposing this, so not going over anyone's head, or not trying to, trying to just get us all on the same page and having these discussions. So I think it would be really inappropriate for us to remove this item without even discussing it.
Okay, I'll take that as a no. Then I heard someone ring in, Councilman Baylor, did you join?
Yes, I did.
Did you hear the motion, the amendment to the motion?
I did not.
Okay, so we're on the Item D, approval of the regular agenda, and there was a motion, Gleason, second, Allison, to remove Item 20, the City Department Council High Level Look at the Cordova Police Department. So we're in discussion on that amendment to remove that from the agenda. Did you have any comment on that?
I do. Has everybody commented? If not, could you come back to me, please?
I will come back to you. Councilman Sherman.
Give me a second, thank you.
Councilman Sherman. To the amendment.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So I agree with a lot of the points that have been made, that council's role is to assist and guide and support really our only employees, which are the city manager and the city clerk. But as a former city employee, I know how much I wanted to have city council become informed and knowledgeable about our department, and I worked hard to have city council come to visit and learn and gain knowledge about the department and have informative discussions with department heads. Right now, we're limited to that only at budget time or in work sessions, and I guess I don't necessarily disagree with this, but I feel that the format is wrong, and I feel that council should pay attention to all departments, but do it in an informed way and in a way that doesn't supersede our employees who are the city manager. And so I'm not comfortable with this going forward necessarily, but I would love to see a work session, maybe, for each department prior to the budget sessions, where we could openly ask questions about what the department's needs are, what they would like to see, what their visions are, so that we could discuss that prior to budget time, and so when we get down to budget time, we have, we've got some knowledge base. And I would ask that because we also represent the community, and I feel this balance is really important between the people who do the work for the city and for the community, and that's what we were elected to do. So I would vote in favor of this, but only to see it come back in a different form, or different, yeah, different form, maybe as a work session for various departments. And I know as a former department head, I would love the opportunity to explain more information, provide more information to council. So I would probably support this at this point in time.
Okay, Councilman Schaefer. To the amendment.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I would be interested to know the opinion of the mayor or the manager about whether or not this is in the purview of council. I mean, we are indeed ultimately responsible for passing a budget, and so understanding the needs of the department and the services that the community wants, you know, is important for understanding funding levels for various departments. So I don't think it hurts to open up and have the conversation and have the discussion. And I agree that these conversations can be hard, but they can also be positive and constructive if we all approach it with an open mind, level head. But I also agree that there is a maybe a more methodical or strategic way to approach this kind of department evaluation, you know, maybe in a work session setting so that, you know, there can be a give and take in terms of information sharing. So, but I don't know, I think that having the conversation doesn't hurt for having more information that comes to passing the budget. So I would be in favor of having the conversation tonight, and if not, I would definitely agree with Councilman Sherman, that I'd wanna see a strategic, a plan come up for having these types of discussions about our department.
Okay, so Councilman Schaefer, I'm taking that. At this time, you're opposed to the amendment to remove it from the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for asking the question about mayor-manager feedback on the process, and I'd be glad to answer that, but I don't want to influence council discussions. Rather, Councilman Baylor made his comments, and then I'll interject if there's no objection. Councilman Baylor, to the amendment.
Yeah, well, I definitely oppose it. I don't know if these comments have been made or not. Sorry if you didn't even like. The chief of police works for the city manager, and he serves at her behalf. So she sets the tone. If they're not doing what she wants them to do, then she has that discussion with them, and they get it fixed. So I think she took the correct steps from the last issue. She's hired somebody to mentor them, to train. Perhaps that retired chief can also get some training to our city manager and to our city council on what to expect from a small-town police force, how to interact with them. And so I think if there's issues with the police department going from here forward, that lands on the city manager's desk. That's her department. Now, if you wanna talk about the city department, the police force, we already have that means to do that. We went out and spent over $3,000 on a survey, and that survey with questions were asked, we got responses. Now, we never really sat down as a group and dissected that survey, we never discussed it, we never got input from the chief from it. We just spent the money and it lay there late. So for those of you that want to get into the weeds and want to find out what the police are doing, that's wrong. Those of you who want to sit down with that survey, kind of review what the public's expectations are of our police department, then that's the way to go about it. If you go down this road with the way this is written up on this agenda tonight, I think you're gonna find yourself in trouble. So I would definitely be against moving forward with this, the way this was presented. In fact, I think this should be saved and used as council training on how not to put something on agenda. So, thank you.
Okay, so I'll take that as a yes to the amendment to remove it from the agenda this time. So to Councilman Schaefer's question, I think policy discussions and decisions are the purview of council. Our process is the two councilmen can put an item in the agenda, or the manager, or the mayor can. Discussion of community interest, where there's been a lot of complaints and whatnot, I think it's appropriate for council to know if a department's being properly managed without getting into the weeds. But my newly-elected officers' training, one of the things they said about policy that really helped me understand the difference between the role of manager and operations and the role of council and policy, which for us is our codes and regulations, is that staff recommends, interprets, and administers policy. So staff are the ones that bring policy forward for the council, and then the council considers and adopts the policy. Because you, as a council, are setting the policy to provide the services to the community. If those policies aren't working, generally, the council can go to staff and say, hey, we don't feel like, can you report on this? It seems like we've got a problem here. Are the policies working? And if they're not, then, you know, if the policies are okay, then let's follow them and head off these problems. If not, then bring some recommendations to us. So as far as the memo, the only suggestion I had there is that, in recommendation to council, is if you're getting complaints from the public, then the first and best thing to do is to direct those citizens to the city manager, because that brings it to her attention and puts her in a position to manage those. And it gives the information to the manager firsthand, not through interpretation by the councilman. However, you're elected officials, not everyone's comfortable approaching the manager with complaints, so that's absolutely your role and responsibility, really, to hear from the public, and then you take it to the manager where they can have a chance. That gives the manager a chance to investigate the complaint, reconcile any problems, bring those policy recommendations to council, and that way, the manager gets it first and gets a chance to manage it. So those are just my suggestions there, and there's a will of the council to have a discussion around this and a policy discussion. And my recommendation would be, if this fails, you know, if it doesn't fail and you have the discussion today, remember to keep it at a policy level, but remember that your manager is empowered to manage the city and the departments of the city. And if it doesn't, then I would just, you can direct your manager to report to this and report on the functions of a department and any recommendations for policy changes to best serve the community. So, little long-winded, but I know many of you haven't had a chance for training and whatnot, so that's my comments. So you've all had one chance for comments, and it's fairly close here, so in case there's any changes, I'm just gonna go back through the same order. Any further comments, Councilman Gleason?
No.
And again, the amendment is to remove this item from the agenda. Councilman Allison.
The only thing I would add, I guess, is Councilmember Sherman said it pretty much how I feel. I have no problem getting a report from departments, all of the departments, getting a tour. I have a little bit of nervousness in going to, say, if I wanted to go to the dump myself and visit with the garbage guys without the manager in tow. I got in trouble with that at the hospital a few years ago, and wouldn't want to go there again, but certainly if the manager can arrange some tours or to bring those departments in to give us an update on them, I think that's fine, to get information and an update. I'm certainly not gonna give direction to any of those departments. The information is fine, but the discussion level, I don't think it's appropriate the way it's presented here, so I will be supporting the amendment to the agenda to take it off.
Councilman Gard.
Okay. This whole discussion was supposed to be on a policy level, not a personnel level. It's been a topic of heated contention in the community for a while, so instead of letting it sit there and fester in the community, I thought the best way to deal with this was to sit there and talk about it and get it out in the open. It's not trying to throw stones at a department, stones at any people, doing any of that. If there have been errors made in the past, there's always gotta be a chance for redemption. If there's not, the world doesn't work. But as far as setting policy or discussing setting future policy for how we like to do it for stuff, I have no idea why there'd ever be a problem with that. If we can't discuss something together, we're never gonna solve any problems like this. So I still believe we can have this discussion. I never intended it to be anything to beat anybody or any department up, but there's always room for improvement every place. I'd like to see us talk about this and get some stuff out in the open and clear the air a little bit. There's too much going on rumor mill-wise and too much animosity on both sides of the fence, and there doesn't have to be any of that stuff here.
Vice Mayor Meyer.
Yeah, I don't really have too much to add. I think this is a discussion we can have. I think there's other points on this, people are talking about process. You know, we can talk about all that, I feel like, having that discussion item. Otherwise, we're just kicking it down the can, down the road further, and, you know, nobody's, just because there's a memo attached, it doesn't mean that you have to only stick to those points or only say that. Those are just some of the things that have come up that have prompted to this level, and it maybe came out of the survey, because, you know, we do need to think about, 21% still said they were either dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with the department. And, you know, we're never gonna get it to 100%, I think that we can all agree on that, but we have to at least be willing to have a discussion, I think. And if it gets to a workshop or something else later on, that's fine. You know, we can talk about process, but I would like to keep this item on there. One in particular that I think we have to go into a detective session and talk about, one on there we all got the complaint about, I don't think I need to go into detail about it, but it would be very concerning to me if we don't address it.
Councilman Sherman.
So I wanted to comment further on Councilman Allison's comments. The informational visits I looked at in terms of visiting departments that were approved and scheduled, and the city manager would attend with us, with department heads, and I think those would be very useful prior to budget session, and I would really love to do that. And I think there's always room for improvement. I agree with Councilman Meyer, getting stuff out in the open is important. I'm just not sure this is the right method necessarily. I'm just not sure this is the right method necessarily, or the right, the right process. I would love to have a work session. Maybe this could be work session number one. I agree with her, there are some items that we know specifically with the police department that we're concerned about. Maybe that's work session number one. Maybe there's an opportunity for executive session within that work session, that we allow the public to comment prior to that. So I guess I am still not in favor of having this on the agenda as it is presented tonight, but I am certainly not opposed to having discussions and informative work sessions with departments and department heads, the city manager, and city staff, so that we can all learn and become really informed. The public can come and learn. You know, we're facing lots of tough decisions ahead, and it was just, I just think we can do better at this if we frame it a little differently as a work session. And so I am still going to vote in favor of not keeping it on the agenda tonight, but I'm not discarding it as unimportant as, not something worth discussing, and I would work to bring it back as well.
Councilman Schaefer?
Hi, thank you. I'm definitely in agreement with Councilman Sherman in terms of being in favor of future work sessions and meetings with departments to get some more information sharing, and just so we have a better, fuller view of each department, you know, when it does come down to budget time. And I do agree that there may be a different method for bringing up this conversation, but, I mean, we're here, it's on the agenda. I don't think it would hurt us to have, to open it up and have the conversation and talk about, like, the high-level policy issues for the department. So, yeah, I guess I'm not going to vote for the amendment now, but it sounds like it's going to pass, so I just hope that, at least during pending agenda then, we can revisit this and, yeah, come up with a way to have a methodical discussion for evaluating and learning about our department.
Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm at a disadvantage, because I haven't been given the police policy for me to read through that, to fully understand it. I did read the police survey, and yeah, there's some people that, what was it, 21%? But what are they dissatisfied with? A lot of their comments were, we'd like to see more drug bust, we'd like to see that. Well, that's kind of why we did that police survey, is what are the, what's the community's expectations? What are those realistic expectations? What can we afford to do? And that's where this discussion should have had. We ought, it should be, we already have the tool to do this. We're not paid for the tool, let's use it. Now, we've got a retired chief that is going to assist us. Bring him in. Let's have a little one-on-one with council. What are realistic expectations for small-town police force? How do you see this interaction? Somebody else brought up, oh, well, we've got this letter, we should go in executive session to discuss it. Absolutely not. That is the manager's job. If there's a complaint lodged, the manager takes care of it. The manager sits down with the chief of police. The manager makes sure that that gets taken care of in a proper manner. If it doesn't, the manager leaves the police chief of his duties and gets somebody else. Council does not go in and interfere with those kind of things. I mean, where does that stop? When he comes in and checks out and looks at the library, and he don't smile and say, "Thank you," are we going to get into that business, too?
So Councilman Baylor, we're starting to wander into the discussion away from the amendment itself.
Right. Well, I'm giving you reasons why not to do it. The reason with to do it was to talk about a letter, and absolutely not, that's not our free view. So, no, I'll be supporting to, I'll be voting to, on the amendment, yes. Thank you.
Okay, so the amendment is to remove item 20 from the agenda, and so a yes vote removes that Cordova Police Department discussion. Roll call vote, please.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yep.
Belinda Meyer?
No.
Jeff Gard?
No.
David Allison?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
No.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries for three.
Councilman Allison?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have an amendment that I'd like to make, add item 18B to vice mayor election.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have motion, Allison, second. Gleason, to your motion?
Yeah, it's just, we're certifying the election tonight. Vice mayor serves until the certification of the next election, so I think we can elect a vice mayor tonight.
To your second, Councilman Gleason?
Councilman Allison said it just right.
Okay. Councilman, yes?
Code actually says that it's at the first meeting after certification of the election.
Okay, so this is the meeting certification. Would you like to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
That's what code says.
Thank you.
I'm going to have it all ready to go for next time.
Okay, thank you. And that's why you didn't have it on this agenda.
Right.
Thanks for the reminder. And then, council, I would suggest, based on a staff that, recommendation that might be in your inbox, the, we have an executive session for item 20 regarding land disposal, and yet item, let me see, no, I'm sorry.
So first, you were supposed to say that I used the wrong number.
That's the wrong number. Yeah, I'm actually referring to item 21. So item 21, maybe I'll read the memo you gave me. So item 21 is the discussion of the dock and marine warehouse, and more appropriate to get a staff briefing and an executive session before you actually make that decision. So I'd recommend just moving item 21 down below and after the executive session. Make it item 24D, or 24A, we'll call it. And then, of course, after you come out of executive session, we'd be back in open session where you could discuss and debate that motion.
So move.
Second.
Is there any objection? Okay, so we'll make that amendment. Are there any further amendments to the agenda?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Meyer.
Councilmember Meyer?
I would like to remove item nine from the consent calendar. I have a conflict for that one, so I wouldn't be able to.
Okay.
I have to excuse myself for that.
Thank you. We'll set that aside, and thank you for disclosing the conflict. Little jump on our next item. Any further amendments? Any other items to remove from the consent agenda?
Well, we can do that.
Yeah.
Out of, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that when we get there. So, any other amendments to the agenda? Okay, I'll hold that item, Councilmember Meyer, until we get to the consent calendar in case any further want to be removed. So what we have in front of us is an agenda that has been amended to remove item 20, and it moves item 21 down to position 24A. So all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Okay, we have one opposed. Item E, conflicts of interest, and Councilman Meyer's already disclosed a conflict of interest on item nine on the consent calendar. Are there any other conflicts of interest or ex parte communications for council to disclose? Okay, hearing none. Communications, buy-in petitions from visitors. We have guest speakers this evening regarding Northern Edge 2021 presentation, and council question and answers, because it is a presentation to council from the U.S. Navy and the Air Force representatives. Thank you for your patience, and I'll turn over the mic to our guests for their presentation. We'll have a little bit of technology boot here for visual.
We're just having them rejoin, because our Zoom conference call ended, so they're rejoining into a new one.
I told them it would be about seven. Because it comes up first.
Best-laid plans?
Yes, sorry.
Just waiting for one more. All right, Brandon, the floor is yours. Go ahead and test your microphone for me. Try it again?
Test, test.
All right, and you can screen share whenever you're ready.
Awesome, okay. Well, thank you very much for giving us the time to give this presentation this evening. My name is Senior Chief Brandon Rail, I'm from the Alaskan Command Public Affairs Office. I'm joined today by Mr. John Mosher, who is the U.S. Navy Pacific Fleet Environmental Program Manager for Region Northwest and Alaska. I'm also, we also have Mr. Kenny Skarle, who is from my office, and I'll talk a little bit more about him at the very end of the presentation. So what we'd like to do today is give you a quick briefing on what we're looking at for Northern Edge 21, which is scheduled to start in a little over, about a month and a half here. We have a couple of slides. I will talk a little bit about the exercise itself, and then Mr. Mosher will talk about some of the environmental questions that we've been asked over our various visits to Cordova and other coastal Alaska communities. So with that, if you bear with me for one second while I get the screen share started. Is everybody seeing that? Are you guys seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Great.
Want to make it swap displays? We're seeing it as your notes. There you go.
How about that? Look good?
Perfect.
It's possible to get a little more volume.
What was the last comment?
It might be best to pull open the YouTube in order to hear him appropriately. I'm not entirely certain how the quick share will work on the teleconference. Go ahead, Brandon.
Okay, ready to start?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so the first question is, why is it important for us to conduct exercises in Alaska? This first slide kind of speaks to that. If you look to the left-hand side, you'll see the larger globe, and the important part here is the red lines that you see. Those lines represent flying time from Alaska, specifically Jay Bear, but doesn't vary much from anywhere in Alaska, to major northern hemisphere locations. What's important here to note is that from Alaska, we can get anywhere in the northern hemisphere that we need to go in about nine hours. It's this fact that led Air Force General Billy Mitchell back in the 50s to say that Alaska is the most strategic location on Earth. That was true in the 50s, it's even more true today with a lot of the changes that we're seeing in the world. As Alaskans, we all know how the environment is changing and the differences we've seen over our lifetimes here. The image in the upper right of the slide, that represents the trade routes, the maritime passages that have opened up over the last few years during the summer times. At the bottom, you'll see the Northwest Passage, which shipping can go up through the bearing, follow along the coast of Canada, come back down on the East Coast, shaving off quite a bit of steaming time from places like China. The other route that you'll see is the Northern Sea Route that follows the northern coast of Russia. This one is especially relevant to both Russia and China, as Russia is totally set to capitalize on this new route. They're offering their ice-breaking services, all kinds of different things that they're monetizing. China is very interested in this, because now, to get their goods to market in Europe, instead of going down south through the Straits of Malacca, very dangerous area, through the Indian Ocean, all the way back up through the Suez and into European ports, they can just go north over the top of Russia, come back down into Europe, shaving typically two weeks off their transit time, which makes it a very valuable thing. In addition to the trade routes, there are the untapped resources that we're starting to discover in the Arctic. That is of great importance to everybody. In the lower right-hand corner of the screen, the image that you see, the map there, you'll see the small red, white, and blue dots. Those represent Russian military bases in the Arctic. That indicates how seriously they take everything that's going on up there. Moving on to the next slide, with what we just saw, it is important for us to continually exercise our ability to protect our interest in the Arctic and be prepared to conduct homeland defense missions, whatever may be required. To do that, we have exercises such as Northern Edge. Northern Edge specifically is a biannual exercise that's held every two years during the odd years. It dates back to 1975. It is primarily an aviation exercise that occurs in the Joint Pacific-Alaska Range Complex. That is the, our nation's largest aerial training range, located generally east of Delta Junction to the north and south a bit, all the way out to the Canadian border. There are a few separate kind of satellite areas to that range, but that is the bulk of it. In that training area, during Northern Edge, we will have approximately 200 aircraft participating. I say approximately because we can't hammer down those numbers until the exercise commences. Many of these assets can change at the very last minute, meaning 24, 48 hours out from the commencement of the exercise, just due to whatever requirements we have for them. So approximately 200 aircraft, three-quarters of those will come from land-based stations such as Jay Bear, Ison, and a few smaller airfields, kind of in an expeditionary capability. About a quarter of those, or 50 or so aircraft, we expect to come from a Navy carrier strike group, which will be operating in the Temporary Maritime Activities Area in the Gulf of Alaska. Now, that technically is a part of the J-PAC, it's activated during certain times of the year for exercises. Mr. Mosher will talk a little bit more about that during his part of the presentation. So this year's exercise will occur between May 3rd and May 14th. We expect it to be a very similar skiscope, everything to what we saw in 2017 and 2019. So what that means, the conversations we had with a lot of the folks in Cordova and the other coastal communities, we're going to look at a map on the next slide. Actually, I'm going to skip ahead one more, because this one gives you kind of distances... Actually, I'm going to skip ahead one more because this one gives you kind of distances away from the various communities and areas of interest. Tells you how far out there it is. So what we expect you'll see will be similar to the previous two exercise where most people didn't see anything except a few aircraft, potentially a few aircraft flying over. One other note that I had for you guys before I turn it over to Mr. Mosher is we... John and I, along with a few others, have made multiple visits to Cordova over the last few years and trying to get to know the community there better, talking to you all, figuring out what the concerns are. We hope to be able to address a lot of those. We want to continue that relationship building with you all. One of the things that we have asked for, and I know it's always asked of us, is the potential to get ships or anything to visit the various communities. Unfortunately, what we're looking at this year are restrictions, the same restrictions that are keeping us from being there in person tonight are going to prohibit any direct interaction. We are talking with the operations folks, trying to plan something like aircraft flybys or things like that, which our public affairs team will keep you all posted on so that if we're able to do that, you'll know what to expect and hopefully we'll be able to do something like that for the communities. So on that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Mosher, and then when he's done, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. John?
Thank you, Brandon. Good evening, everybody, and Happy Saint Patrick's Day. It's great to join you tonight, though only in a virtual format, at least for now. As Brandon noted, I work for the U.S. Pacific Fleet, for the U.S. Navy, and I am environmental planner, and I'm further manager for the environmental impact statements that have been done and we're currently completing right now for the training activities in the Gulf of Alaska. And I'll speak to that a little bit more on the last slide I have. So Brandon mentioned and showed on the graphic the TMAA, the Temporary Maritime Activities Area. This is the area that the Navy's activities occur in during the exercise, Northern Edge, as shown there. Next slide, please. Yep, thanks. This is only established, only in place during the exercise. It's not something you'll see on nautical charts. It's really only developed for the purposes of planning the exercise and allowing us to do an environmental impact analysis. It is a fairly large area. It's over 42,000 square nautical miles of sea space. There are no restrictions to civilian navigation. That includes fishing vessels, commercial shipping, or civilian aircraft during the exercise. Most of the activities that are conducted within the TMA occur very far offshore to towards the center of the TMAA, so not necessarily even around the outskirts of the TMA. It is, again, a large area, but it's a flexibility for those training activities to prepare and to avoid the other users of marine environment. There are also a number of protective measures that are implemented by the Navy when we are conducting certain training activities in the training area. Next slide, please. Some of those protective measures, these have been developed over time in coordination with the National Fishery Service. We implement mitigation zones when we use active sonar or weapons activities. These mitigation zones are essentially exclusion zones that we either power down the equipment or shut down the activity if there are marine mammals in that area. We also minimize the use of live explosives during the training exercise. And I'll note, in the last two exercises, both 2017 and then again in 2019, no live explosives were used at all. So it was quite a minimization for those exercises. The Fort Live Bank mitigation area, this is an area that was identified back in about 2016 based on a lot of input we received from Alaska Native Tribes and from other individual organizations. It's an area that's important for ground fish fisheries, and it is an area that is excluded from any explosive activities now during the exercise. Another mitigation measure we take is to post training qualified marine species lookouts, observing marine species, everything from marine mammals to potentially sea turtles and marine birds. We report monitoring results from the exercise, so what activities were actually conducted during each of the exercises is reported both to regulatory agencies such as the National Fishery Service, as well as posted on our website to make that information available to the public. We coordinate with regulatory agencies for adaptive management, so to modify or to improve our mitigation measures over time based on new information. And then we conduct a number of marine research projects, including population surveys and other monitoring efforts. Next slide, please. We have analyzed the potential effects of the training activities, and there are minimal impacts anticipated to marine species. Specifically for fish, the TMA is positioned in an area that does not overlap with fisheries management areas, and specifically, there is no overlap at all with salmon management areas. Mid-percussive sonar, a sensor system that the Navy uses to find submarines underwater, is not something that's heard by most fish species, including shellfish and some of the key commercial species such as salmon and groundfish. So there is no mortality at all from sonar. We minimize, as I mentioned before, minimize the use of explosives during training, and these activities that would potentially use those weapon systems do occur further offshore, again, more towards the center of the TMAA and away from those management areas. And then again, the Navy does avoid very specifically fishing activities. So if somebody's conducting fishing in a particular area that happens to be within the TMA, we're simply going to avoid those vessels and those activities. With marine mammals, mammal exposure is expected with the limited authorized use of sonar that we have received permits for. These would have no long-term effects or no injurious effects to marine species over time. No strandings have been associated with the Navy's training in the Gulf of Alaska, and no ship strikes have occurred with the Navy's training in the region as well. Next slide, please. Marine Species Monitoring Program, this is a great program the Navy's involved in, has been completing a number of marine species monitoring projects now for well over a decade. We're one of the leading contributors to marine species research in the world, and we do abide by all the environmental regulations for protecting marine species. Part of regulatory compliance is complying with the requirements that we have for monitoring reporting. I mentioned that briefly with having to report what activities are actually conducted during the exercise, both to the regulatory agencies that oversee the permits that we receive, as well as making that information available to the public. Since 2009, the Navy's contributed approximately $6 million to those marine species projects, so very specifically to projects in the Gulf of Alaska. These have helped better understanding of marine species, how humans interact with those species, and how we can better minimize our potential effects on those species. A very exciting project was started just last year in 2020. It's continuing this year and into the future. And this one is a little different than what we've been doing in the past, which has been primarily focused on marine mammals. But this project is very specifically focused on salmon. So it's a salmon tagging project, which is being worked with the University of Alaska, and it is looking at different habitat use areas for salmon species, migratory routes that they use, and then looking at the potential overlap with certain human activities. So filling some very important data gaps with this information for us to better understand how we interact, in this case, with fish. And there is a lot more information on these projects, this program for the Navy on the website that's listed there on the slide. This website does have all the projects that are done by the Navy across the country, so not just the ones in the Gulf of Alaska. But again, there are a good number of those done in Alaskan waters. Next slide, please. Just to change a little bit here, environmental planning and engagement. We are currently operating under authorizations that we've received from the EIS, the Supplemental Environmental Effect Statement, that we completed in April 2017. And those permits that we received from the National Fishery Service, those permits covered a period of time from 2017 through 2022. So that's the authorization, that's the one we're operating off of for this exercise that will be coming up this year in 2021. But then those authorization do expire, we have to renew. So to do that, we're completing an environmental impact statement now. That project was kicked off back in 2020, in, I'm sorry, 2019, that project was kicked off. In December of 2020, we just released the draft Supplemental Environmental Effect Statement for public review and comment. That was out for a 67-day comment period. With the COVID precautions, we couldn't hold those in-person public meetings that we normally would, but we did hold two virtual public meetings, and those seemed to go very well with a similar virtual platform that we're using tonight. The final supplemental EIS is expected to be released in winter of 2022, so just under a year from now. And then we are looking at some additional public outreach. Again, we have certain limitations with COVID at the moment. We are continuing that public engagement through virtual opportunities. There's a number of different public events that we're still participating in through a virtual format. And again, I hope things are cleared up and out to distant future and look forward to in-person engagements getting back to normal. Our information for the project, for the EIS that we're conducting now, is on the website that's listed there on the slide. It's a pretty simple website, goa-eis.com. Next slide, please. And I think that's it for our slides, and that will open us up for comments and our questions. I look forward to addressing any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Counsel, before I open for questions, I just want to thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation and for honoring Senator Murkowski's request to engage more with the communities. Over the last four years, you've given us after reports and touched base periodically in between. When we'd asked you for, when you reached out and asked if there was anything you could do for the community, we asked for the ability to observers to go onboard during the exercises. So I want to thank you for hosting Councilman Guard Meyer, Councilman Meyer, myself, and City Manager out to the exercises in 2019. And we'd also asked for an opportunity to maybe have an open house with a naval vessel visit to the community. And we understand that with our shallow approach to the harbors and whatnot, you weren't able to accommodate that, but you did send your airships out and really enjoyed that. I think we had about 250 citizens attend that event. And then, thirdly, we asked if it was possible to utilize the surfaces of our shoreside petroleum for fueling and whatnot, because that does have an economic impact on our community. And I realize there were logistical restrictions there, but we appreciate you listening to and honoring those. And just on another note, indirectly, I'm aware of a lot of the research that the Office of Naval Research does, particularly supporting renewable energy development and so forth in the state of Alaska, and actually indirectly through our Alaska Center for Energy and Power, hosting an engineering intern here in Cordova last summer to work on our battery energy storage system. So thank you, and on behalf of the community. And with that, I'd open it for any questions from counsel. Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen, and I think I saw on there your contact information if there's any questions from the council or public. So appreciate your briefing and outreach. Mayor, this is Senior Chief Rail, if I may. As far as the contact information, I did want to note that we have Major Michael Herzog listed on here instead of myself. He is going to be the Joint Information Bureau Lead during the exercise. So if you all have any questions at all while the exercise is going on during those first two weeks in March, feel free to reach out to him. The other reason that you don't see my name on there is I'm getting ready to retire. I'm wrapping up my naval career, so the next time you see me, I will not be wearing this uniform. And that is actually why Mr. Kenny Skarle is here. If you can see him on the screen, he is our outcome community relations person. And so I point that out because if you have any questions about anything military in Alaska, not just Northern Edge, you're more than welcome to reach out to him, as you might have called me previously. You can reach him at the same phone number, and I don't have that on the slide, but I know, Mayor, you have that, and the city clerk has that, along with a few other folks out there. So please feel free to reach out to us if there's anything we can do. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, next we have a report from our incident management team. Dr. Sanders wasn't available this evening, but Heather Brandon is available. And Heather, we got a pretty packed agenda, so if you could start maybe at a high level and some high-level details for a few minutes, and then it'll give counsel an opportunity to ask some questions. And the floor is yours, Heather. And we can't hear you if you need to unmute. I'm just checking my texts here, counsel. Okay, we'll move on for now, and we can come back if we need to there. We're now at audience comments on agenda items, and so if there's any audience comments, you can just approach the mic up here to give your comments if you're in the room. And if you could, please keep those to three minutes, and agenda items related again. Otherwise, you can call in on the call-in number, which is 253-6202. And while we're waiting for those, I'll revert to the Prince William Sound Aquaculture update, and your representative to that board is Councilman Baylor. Councilman Baylor?
Yes, thank you. So I apologize, I left all my notes at home. They had their spring meeting here recently, it was all on Zoom. They did elect, or I guess elect hired the proper word, a new manager. And if Dave Grace would help me out there, I don't have my notes. Jeff Clark, is that correct, Dave?
Yep.
Yeah. He's a 26-year employee. He was the production manager. So he is the new manager down there. They've shifted around some other positions and hired a couple more people. I had a discussion with Tom Carpenter, who is the president of the board, and kind of we talked a little bit about the jobs that have left Cordova, and he expressed that he is aware of it. It is a topic of conversation, but right now, it's kind of tough with the COVID and the transition of people. The new manager won't be living here, but he will be spending a lot of time here. As I said, he's a 26-year employee, and he's been living in, I think, Eagle River all those years, so I don't think there's an expectation that he would actually move down here. But other positions, they are hoping to get moved back here, as well as the Challenger. One of the issues with the Challenger was when you're switching out crews with the COVID, if they were to fly down here, then they'd have to, you know, spend their five days if they were to fly down here, then they'd have to, you know, spend their five days or 14 days, but made it very hard for the transition. So they were out of Valdez, where they could literally leave their house, drive down, and they wouldn't have to quarantine. So I guess I'll just leave you with that. The local officials here, the chairman of the board, the president of the board, and executive committee, I mean, they are aware of the situation, but they've just got to get through a poor fishing year, and COVID, and everything else, and kind of redirect their resources. So that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Baylor. We have audience comments, I'll go to the one on the phone, and then back to the audience So for the caller, if you could just state your name and residence for the record, and the mic is yours.
Hi, can you hear me?
You're very, very soft. Can you get a little closer to the mic, maybe, or turn up volume?
Hi, can you hear me now?
That's better, yes.
Hi, Mike Hicks, Box 674, Cordova. Just wanted to thank you for taking a look at the item 20 on the agenda. Just like you say, you know, the council hired the manager to do a job, the manager hired police people to do a job, and they've hired good employees, just let them do their job. If you want to pick up some of the other stuff at a later discussion, a work session, that would be appropriate. And I'm more than happy to volunteer my time to sit in on those. I have a lot of historical knowledge, having run departments for several years. But you've got a good department, you've got a good city manager, let them do their job. And thank you again for taking a look at that, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Audience comments on agenda items here in the room? And there's a microphone, did you have comments? You can just go ahead and approach the microphone, and we're just on audience comments on agenda items. If you could just state your name for the record.
Okay, thanks. My name's Kenneth Jones, 514 Sunnyside Drive. A lot of stuff on the agenda tonight, it's going to be hard to cover it in three minutes, but I'll give it a crack. I'm glad to see the city is pursuing more grants for the harbor. This needs to remain number-one priority of the community, and I'm glad to see that. Thanks for everybody who's working on that. Don't lay off the gas, and don't limit ourselves into a project that will potentially block future expansion. Really would urge everybody on the council to look at PND Alternative 4, you can probably get that from Helen, and that's the one we want to push for. It's going to fit the fleet's needs the best. I would like to speak on the U.S. Forest Service lease. I urge you to make that a short and flexible lease for that dock and warehouse. They, in 2015, the Harbor Commission passed a resolution kind of telling everybody the intention is to expand into that area, that was six years ago, and we're not quite ready to do the expansion yet. It is upcoming, and there are other interested private tax-paying businesses, that spot would be the only accommodating place for in the harbor. The Forest Service can park their boats elsewhere, either working out a deal with some priority stalls or over on the state dock. And, you know, another option on that, if you didn't want to do a short lease, is you could just go out for proposals. And, you know, $1,000 a year is not fair market value. Three vessels parking in the harbor would cost me over $6,000 a year, and I wouldn't have a private dock space affixed to city land and a warehouse built on city property. I urge you guys to support the DMI proposal, we need to support investment in our shipyard, it's an important part of our community. I do hope that the building can be a more permanent structure, not something like we had in the past, that was a bad experience. Please work with this company to make a plan that will work for their business and our fleet. They are filling a much-needed service in our community, and I'm glad to see them starting up. Counsel needs to focus more on community priorities outlined in the comprehensive plan. I don't understand why, over the past year, we're constantly talking about the police when we have less crime now than we did 10 years ago. The police budget needs to be left alone, let them do their jobs. If you want to review the survey and the budget, that's fine, but putting something on the agenda specifically because of recent events with individual employees oversteps the council's authority. Why doesn't the council take up, you know, property tax incentives that'll spur private investment and spend their time doing something that can actually tackle that comprehensive plan instead of wasting time on rehashing the same things over and over again? Many communities have implemented other programs, and we need to focus on that. Good job on the vaccine rollout. I would urge you to implement no new mandates, it's time to eliminate the mask mandate if you're vaccinated. People want to listen to science, well, there are multiple studies that... And I also urge the city to evaluate going to multiple-choice voting for council elections like we have for school board and health board. As somebody who has had the unfortunate pleasure to run against fellow Cordovans and people who I consider friends of mine, I would much rather have the election process be where you'd vote for two or three candidates of the bunch and not pit one citizen against the other. Not that it would change any of the outcomes, I just feel like I have to choose to run directly against people I consider friends, because I want to serve the community, and I'd like to see that change. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones, and particularly for touching on so many agenda items and keeping it to three minutes, appreciate it. And I recognize that we do have Heather online, but I'll just proceed with audience comments.
Yeah, real quick, Wendy Rainey, 2500 Orca Road, but I'm here in capacity for Parks and Rec and Trails Committee. So if you have any questions on number eight, Resolution 32110, for supporting a grant, I'm here to answer any of those questions if you have them. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have audience comment call online? Is there any other audience comments here in the room? Yes, if you could just approach the mic and then your name for the record, please.
So, good evening, my name is Steve Namens, and I'm the district ranger here for the U.S. Forest Service here in Cordova. I appreciate Mr. Jones's kind of personal opinion. We've been in Cordova probably for over a century. There was kind of value added in 1965, when the city went into a lease with the U.S. Forest Service. We've been a partner and collaborator with the city for years, and we want to kind of continue that into the future. There's been some kind of contention about maybe the Forest Service taking advantage of the city in relation to that lease. Over the last 10 years, on average, I think we've rung in around $21 million in contracts over $100,000 into the community. So I would say that we're contributing. We employ probably 30 full-time employees and about that many in seasonal workforce. So as far as economic input, I would say that we're a contributor, and thank you for the opportunity to share.
Good evening, Mark Frye, 813 Woodland Drive. I'm here in capacity for Shoreside Petroleum today as the terminal manager here. I would like to continue to offer our support and our interest in putting a floating fuel dock within the harbor in some location. So Shoreside Petroleum has put a letter of interest in for a specific piece of property. Well, that is the property that is up for discussion today. That's not maybe the only place that we can go. We certainly look forward to working with the city council and the Forest Service and all the Harbor Commission to try to find a suitable location to put a floating fuel dock to better help the Cordova fleet. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there additional audience comments on agenda items? Do we have any callers? Okay, thank you. I'll revert back to guests, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is guest speakers, I guess. Do we have you back online, Heather?
Yes, I'm here, Clay.
Okay, yeah, we've got a pretty full agenda, I mentioned earlier. If you can kind of keep it high level and the high points, and then we can leave a little time for council questions. Thank you.
Yeah, perfect. So just to get going, we started our local industry calls on February 18th. Again, we had participation from every one of our local processors. We had Charles Pelkin from DHFF, and Jason Wired from DEC, who are both part of the industry team for the state on the call, they were extremely helpful. We put out for the processors a lot of the new guidance that they've come up with, and this is basically based off of lessons learned from last year, what we want to incorporate into this year, and then we touched on what vaccination is going to mean in the industry. Due to the drop in the emergency order, some of the rules and regulations are less strict than they were before. However, our processors are going to move forward with the stricter rules that we had in place earlier in the season. So when you look at the documents that were provided, you'll see that they were given the revised Health Advisory 4 Alert 4 and the Outbreak Health Order 5. The Outbreak Health Order 5 has all those stricter regulations, and the Health Advisory 4 are the newer ones, so that they can compare and contrast the best practices that they need to hold on to. We still are looking at everybody working together really, really well throughout the season. There's the very positive conversations that we had. Let's see, Trident is still going, Trident and Ocean Beauty both will still have nurses. They are still interested in putting up a sense of boundaries. Our other processors have each called and had conversations with me about what vaccination looks like, what they need to be doing for quarantine in their facilities. So I think we're in a really good place, starting out at the beginning of the year. On a call earlier this week, I got to listen to some of the vaccination planning that they are doing for the Aleutians. And the Aleutians with the industry, it's going to be the first place that they're really bringing vaccine in. They've had a lot of stressors down there, so they're kind of touching on that. But what's positive about it is that by the time our season starts, the state will have a process in place for what vaccinating for industry workers, whether they're fleet or facility workers, they'll have an idea of what that's going to look like. So those are all very positive things for us. And we were able to communicate to the state our testing needs and what we will need in the way of vaccine allocation, and we got very positive feedback. So I feel like we are on stride for getting this season.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, counsel?
This is Councilman Schaefer.
Councilman Schaefer.
Yeah, I was just wondering, thank you, Heather, and thanks to the whole management team. The vaccination rollouts have been going really well so far, so that's really great. Are there target thresholds for, like, community vaccination levels or things like that for reducing our alert status, or potentially relaxing the guidelines in the future? Do we have, yeah, a threshold or a target that we're trying to hit?
So technically, I don't know if we have that tied into the alert status, but the main goal, I believe, countrywide and each statewide specifically, is that you want to try and get to 60% to 70% vaccination. So for Cordova, from what I understand, after April 7th, we should be at about 67% vaccinated for our winter population. But what we need to look at moving forward is that we have a double of our population, you know, we have a double point increase, about half of our population coming in into the summer. So when we hit the summer season, we probably are already going to be at that 67%. It's just that influx of people is going to drop us down again. So getting those industry and those fleet vaccinations through is what's going to kind of roll us through the end of the summer, and then we'll start seeing all of those, I guess, processes that we've put in place kind of loosen up a little bit. I'm thinking it's around June is when we're going to start to see a change in things Thank you.
Additional questions, counsel? Okay, thank you for that update, Heather.
Absolutely, thank you, Clay.
Chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions, Cordova Community Medical Center Authority Board, do we have anyone online for that? Okay, I know Dr. Sanders wasn't available tonight, so school board representative.
Good evening, and as the calendar in your packet indicates, the school is on spring break, and lots of people are really appreciating the break. We did have our elections, which you'll be certifying this evening, and so we'll welcome back Pete Hefner and say welcome to Hank Krujtoff. It was an exciting election, and I was very pleased to see so many people running and being involved and paying attention, and I hope to find ways to keep those folks engaged. Beyond that, we're looking forward to our joint meeting with the city council in April. I think we have a lot of good things to talk about. And I would offer to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, counsel?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and these attachments are just written reports. Item 8, the Cordova School District Board of Education Resolution 2021-06, thanking the city of Cordova for its response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Board, January 2021 board meeting highlights. And also the student council representative report. So approval of the consent calendar, and counsel, we've already had a request for item 9 to be set aside as a separate item. I'll add that to the agenda, let's just call that item 23A. Are there any other items?
Mayor would like to subtract item 11.
Okay, well, remove item 11 and make that item 23B. Are there any other items counsel would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, with 9 and 11 removed.
Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
David Allison.
Yes.
Jeff Gard.
Yes.
David Gleason.
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved.
Okay, and we have no minutes and no consideration bids. So there were a lot of items on the consent agenda, I won't list them all off, but obviously, manager and staff have been very busy pursuing our number-one priority, which is waterfront planning and development and grant and upgrade opportunities. For myself, I would just say that, counsel, you know, you went over the agenda tonight. I think it's an important topic, I think sometimes it looks like making sausage to grind through process and so forth. But I think it's clear the council wants to have discussions there, and we have pending agenda coming up. So it's good to have those discussions and policy engagement with the managers. That's all I had, unless there's any questions? Managers' report.
I don't have anything to add to my written report, but if there's any questions about any of the items in that particular report, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, counsel, on the managers' report? Okay, I just wanted to add one more comment, actually revert to Mayor's report for a moment. And as the school board report mentioned, I just wanted to thank all the citizens that were willing to volunteer and run for office across the community, and also the great voter turnout that we had and the high engagement by the voters, really great election, and of course, also the way it was managed and administered by our clerk, so thank you. City clerks' report. Oh, sorry, Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, just for the manager.
Yes.
Okay, not a question, more comments, is to say, I look forward to getting an email from you stating that you've taken care of any outstanding... I look forward to getting an email from you stating that you've taken care of any outstanding issues, having to deal with, uh, police force if those matters have been in care of as you have the right power to do and look forward to hearing from you that that happened. Thank you for your service.
Any other questions, comments, counsel, manager?
Councilman Sherman.
Councilman Sherman.
I, I also want to just add a few kudos to, um, the public relations team, um, for the updated website. And it is really easy to use and, um, I appreciate it, appreciated that. And, um, it's been, been really helpful, so thanks.
Other questions, um, counsel, or comments, manager? Okay, uh, city clerks report.
I just want to, um, thank the election board that did a great job. And we finished up this morning with the ballot counting and the resolution is in front of you tonight. Otherwise, I just have a written report and I can just answer questions.
Okay, any questions, counsel? Okay, thank you. Uh, so we have correspondence in the packet as noted. A card from Cordova School District thanking the city for the HVAC upgrades at the high school. And also from the Department of Natural Resources, Division of Mining, Land, Water. Uh, the comment period notice for, for, uh, for aquatic farm site leases in Cordova. Any comments on correspondence, counsel?
Yes, Councilman Baylor.
Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, just shout out to the, uh, school. I think the handwritten notes were really a nice touch and we appreciate it. We're, we're all happy that that job got done thoroughly.
Any other comments, counsel? Okay, um, under ordinances and resolutions, we have resolution 03-21-09. Uh, and that is the certification of the official results of the March 2nd, 2021 City of Cordova General Election.
Are we doing it again?
We have to move to approve that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Have a motion, Gleason, and a second, guard. I'm sorry, that, was that online? Okay. Any discussion?
Oh, yeah, this is Melina.
Um, Melina.
Um, I don't know if I should have recused my, um, myself from this item as well, but probably should.
No, I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so. You won.
Um, yes.
All right, I would just, because it has my name on it.
Yeah, no, that's the, uh, that's the nature of, uh, the voters decided to put you there, not you, so, um, so I don't see a conflict. That's my ruling unless counsel disagrees. Um, is there any further discussion on that item, counsel? Indeed, you need a roll call vote for that? Roll call vote please.
Um, Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Anne Schaefer.
Yes.
Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
David Allison.
Yes.
David Gleason.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, so now that the election's been certified, uh, we have, uh, the swearing in of elected officials. Um, Vice Mayor Meyer and Councilman Schaefer. We can hold, uh, yours off till we can do those in person. And, uh, we have, um, Hank Krujoff, are you here? And also, um, Pete Hefner and also Liz Seneer. And is Linnea here? Okay, um, I'll just do those swearing ins one at a time.
Do you have that one copy?
Um, actually, if you want to just approach my phone, Liz, we can start with you if you like. We'll just keep some distancing here.
So this is the oath of office of the city of Cordova, Alaska. And, um, if you could just repeat after me, please. Uh, I, and you can state your name.
I, Elizabeth Seneer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge my duties as Cordova Community Medical Center Authority Board.
Discharge my duties as Cordova, uh, Community Medical Center.
Authority Board.
Member. Uh, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you for your willingness to serve. Appreciate it on behalf of the community. Normally we'd do these a little more, uh, personally, but, um, if you could just repeat after me, this is oath of office of the city of Cordova, Alaska. Uh, I, and if you could state your name.
I, Hank Krujoff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge my duties as school board member.
Discharge my duties as school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you and appreciate your willingness to serve. Uh, this is oath of office of the city of Cordova, Alaska. And if you could repeat after me, uh, I, and state your name.
I, Peter Hefner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As school board member.
As school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you for your past service and your willingness to continue to serve.
Oh, thank you.
These are filling up my drawer.
So I guess now that you're officially on again, we got to bring you chocolates instead of you bringing them to us?
Well, again, thank you to the many volunteers that are willing to serve, uh, in these capacities for the community. Um, so, let's see, I moved those down there. Uh, we don't have any unfinished business on the agenda. So, uh, counsel, uh, discussion of COVID-19 emergency response. Is there any counsel discussion? Okay, hearing none. Um, item 20 was struck. Um, item 21 disposal and method of dispo, oh, I'm sorry, we moved item 21 down to 24A after the executive session. So we have item 22, uh, disposal and method of disposal for a portion of tract 1A, Ocean Dock subdivision number two. And that's page 88. And what is the will of counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Schaefer.
I move to dispose of a portion of tract 1A, Ocean Dock subdivision number two, as outlined in Cordova Municipal Code 5.22060, be by, um, negotiating, negotiating an agreement with Duck Marine Industries to lease up this property.
Second, Councilman Sherman.
Have a motion, Schaefer, and second, uh, Sherman. Would you like to speak to your motion, Councilman Schaefer?
Um, they, they have the support of the, um, of the planning commission. And I think, uh, I understand correctly, the Harvard Commission is also, um, um, this was discussed with them during the, um, planned disposal map creation. Um, they're already working here in town and providing an important service for the fleet. And so I think, um, if we can keep them here and they're able to do their work, um, more effectively, I think I'm happy to support that.
Okay, and Councilman Sherman to your second.
Yeah, I would agree with, um, Councilman Schaefer on all those above.
Okay, so, uh, I'll just go in order here for comments. Um, Councilman Baylor?
No, I supported.
Uh, Councilman Gard?
I'm in favor.
Councilman, uh, Vice Mayor Meyer?
I'm in favor.
Uh, Councilman Allison?
I support.
Councilman Gleason?
Yeah, I hope he can build something that stays up. I'll support it.
Okay, sounds like counsel's ready to vote. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, a roll call please.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Anne Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, um, actually, I made these item 23A and B. Um, well, I guess we can do the pending agenda. I was thinking, I'd rather do the action items first and then go to pending agenda.
Sure.
Yep.
Is there any objection? Okay, let's, um, keep on with the action items then. So 23A was item nine on the consent agenda. Uh, Councilman Meyer, uh, declared a conflict and that item is resolution 03-21-11, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, approving the final plat of Canary Row Edition 1.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Allison, and second, Gleason. I don't anticipate a lot of discussion on this one. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, uh, can we do a voice vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion.
Six, four, and one conflict.
Yeah, six, uh, four, and one conflict. For the record. Uh, item 23B was the item 11 on the consent agenda. Uh, and that's resolution 03-21-13, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, supporting efforts by the state of Alaska and FEMA to conduct a snow avalanche and landslide hazards assessment in and around the city of Cordova.
Don't move.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that?
Schaefer.
I'm sorry, was that, okay, it was Councilman Schaefer, motion. Councilman Gard, uh, second. Councilman Schaefer to your motion.
Um, I'm in support of it, especially because, um, there, this has been kind of an issue around the state recently and it'd be good to have more information, especially if we as a city don't have to pay any money. So, I'm in support.
Okay, uh, Councilman Gard to your second.
pretty well what's been said before, I just don't want to become hanged. So I'd like to know ahead of time before it becomes an issue.
Hmm, okay. And then I'll just go through my list in order. Uh, Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, I've got some reservations about this. I don't know if it's needed. I think we've identified our snow slide areas. Um, I guess my concern is maybe a little over zealotness on me. People doing this survey and the next thing you know, we have a bunch of people that can't get house insurance and, uh, can't sell their homes because they're designated in some sort of a slide area or something. I would, I would support it for any new subdivisions. I think that'd be a good idea, but I, I'm not seeing any areas of concern right now that would warrant this. And I just have my reservations about it. As, uh, no, they, I, I guess that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Councilman Sherman?
Sure, I, um, I too have, uh, a few mixed reservations, I guess. I, I, and I meant to do some research before the meeting, but, uh, what kind of, um, uh, products have been reported before from, uh, these studies and, uh, other communities? It would just be nice to, maybe the planning staff could share that with us. Um, I, I don't want to be hanged either. Um, and I kind of feel like we've already led the way in some regard to that, um, with what we've experienced in 2000 and in other years. Um, so I, just a little bit more information, I guess. But I, I, I put it on myself for not doing the research ahead of time. Um, I'm open to discussion on this. Uh, it, the cost to the city, um, uh, what the potential, um, outcome might mean to us as well. I guess I still kind of re, look at, um, how we deal with six mile and flooding there and how issues and studies like this will affect us in terms of, um, property owners being able to get, uh, homeowner's insurance or, um, the, uh, value of our, um, future home sales. So just a little bit more information, but I understand the, the concept behind it. So, can't, can't quite confirm it how I'm thinking yet. Just wanted to hear the discussions.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Meyer?
Um, I don't really have anything to add.
Okay, um, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I guess I would have a question for the manager and maybe, maybe staff, but, uh, so this is the state and FEMA. Are they asking to conduct the survey and they want our approval for it? Or are we, are we asking them to do it and requesting them to do it? Or what's the timeline on this thing?
I'm going to defer to life.
Yeah, so the state had actually reached out to us several years ago about this. Um, and nothing ever came of it at the time. And then after, um, Hanes, uh, I kind of found the email and started speaking with the guy. Um, so it was something that was kind of queued and in the works, I would say. Um, and he said that, you know, one of the ways to, um, that would help them with getting their funding through FEMA would be to have some way of showing public support. So, um, you know, I just drafted some resolutions for the planning commission and city council.
Yeah, that, that said, I, um, I kind of have some of the same concerns that, uh, Councilmember Baylor had with, um, you know, it's, it's a free study, yeah. Uh, it would end up being free to Cordova, but, um, in the end, sometimes those things, not knowing what the impacts are, I would, I would like to see us do a little bit more, have a little bit more information in front of me before I made a decision to, to ask for that on, on what are the potential pros and cons. Cons mostly, I, I know the pros, but, uh, what the cons could be to the city. It doesn't sound like it's a, a time sensitive issue, so, um, I'll let the other people comment and then when we're on comment now, I'll make a motion to defer.
Just to confirm, Councilman Allison's question, do you feel like it's time sensitive or?
It's not.
Okay, it didn't sound like it, but, uh, okay. Thank you. Um, and Councilman Gleason?
Yeah, I support being safe and, but I also have reservations and I, there's a lot of stuff.
of stuff we need to know before we do this. And one of the things I hope life can find out is if we do have an existing subdivision and it gets deemed unsafe, would FEMA be willing to buy those people's homes? Because once that gets attached to your property, you're never gonna, you know, nobody's gonna buy your house. So, not that that, we don't know for a fact it's gonna happen. I'd also like to know what their track record is and how they deliver their findings, whether it's, you got a 10% chance you're rolling down the hill or whether it's low, medium, or high. I'd like to know that kind of stuff. So I, I would love to push this off and get some answers like that and then bring it back so we actually can tell people in town, you know, what's gonna happen if their neighborhood gets deemed unsafe.
Okay, so I'm not really hearing, and what I'm hearing more from council, I think, is refer back to staff to get more information about what happens after an assessment or what the potential outcomes are.
So move.
Okay, so we have that motion to refer, Allison, second, Gleason. Is there any objection to referring back to staff at this time? Hearing none, just refer by unanimous consent. Okay, so pending agenda, Councilman Allison?
I, I just want to be sure that staff is, is, understands what we're, what information we want. I don't want them to, you know, go back and look at the memo again in five years, but as long as you understand what we're looking at.
Okay, so I'm seeing a thumbs up from staff and really it's things like impacts on classifications and homeowner's insurance and whether, you know, classifications and property values and so forth. Pending agenda and CIP list, calendar, elected and appointed officials list. Councilman Gard? Oh, sorry, I wasn't sure if you were, you leaned in a little bit, so.
No, I'm just.
Any pending agenda items, council? Okay, good, because you've been working and staff's been working hard to remove items, I should say resolve the items on the pending agenda and making good progress.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Baylor?
Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, for the pending calendar, and I'm just gonna throw this out there and if there's not a wide support to even consider this, and, you know, I'm not saying that we need to go on the agenda, but, yeah, the comments made earlier about the way the voting is where you have to run against the seat, I kind of agree with those comments. I prefer with just two highs or three high, whatever the case may be, vote getters get the position. There may be a solid reason that we don't do this. I think we had this conversation once before. I would like to revisit it, but if, if the rest of the, if I don't have concurrence of that, then we'll, we'll let it go. But I was just throwing that out for consideration on, on a future pending agenda. Obviously, we got a little time to deal with it, but, thanks.
Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I guess, I guess I agree with him, but I think that's a charter, is that a charter thing?
Yes, I put it in my report tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was in there. So, so, you know, it takes an election to change it. We can't just do that here, but, but I, I agree with the, with the concept. That wasn't on the council when they changed it in ninety-five, I think it was, to this, but I don't think that we're big enough to have districts and we don't have lined out districts anyway for each seat, so I'd prefer to have it the way every other election in town is, that the top one, two, or three vote getters get in and, and the seats are open, so.
So I'll just say it sounds like two councilmen are in favor of maybe putting on the pending agenda kind of with enough lead time before the next election. Councilman Gard?
As long as we're making the change to rank choice voting in the state, I don't know if that would behoove us to look at a similar setup here so we don't have two different voting systems we deal with, less confusing ballots. I don't know that it's really gonna make a lot of difference to us here because of the number of people we have vying for a seat. If we had three seats open and five people want to run, then it'd make a difference, but if we're looking at doing it, we might as well look at aligning with the state just to make it a less confusing voting system.
Yeah, so lump those together into maybe changes to the voting provisions in the charter, and that's three. Is there more, council? I think that's enough to put it on the pending agenda.
I would say I wouldn't mind it being discussed at some point, too, because we used to have the mayor's seat as two years. And then when it switched to three, it aligned us to where we have the mayor and three council in one year, and that's a big election. It should be more skewed. It's like the mayor should go when there's two, so maybe we could find a way to alter that as well.
I would like to.
We were changing charter.
I would like to see an exclusion of any discussion about term limits.
Really?
It's a joke. Okay, so we can put that on the pending agenda for maybe August, September-ish? Maybe is that enough time? Because probably some legal involved and.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so maybe August-ish, right, kind of as we get through the fishing season. Other pending agenda items?
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilman Schaefer.
Councilman Schaefer?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't have the conversation today because we decided that maybe there was a better, you know, strategy for reviewing city departments. And so I would suggest putting some type of plan for reviewing city departments, you know, identifying areas of strength and areas that could use improvement, how much do desired services cost, or like a rate or fee analysis within city departments. And if we want to have all that information and have those discussions and work sessions so that we're more informed when it comes to budget session, we're gonna want to start doing that soon.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I just missed one little piece about that, the fee discussions. Is that like the council meetings with, or kind of manager-guided tours of the departments and their functions and stuff for?
Yeah, like how Councilman Sherman suggested earlier, you know, having workshop information sharing between council and the department heads and departments doing tours, I would, that'd be great. Just starting to get that process moving now, because it's gonna take time. And if we want to be able, have that kind of information with our departments before budget time, like we're gonna need to start soon. And then I'd also, one of the other things that I adjusted was a rate or fee analysis or assessment within departments. We pass these fee rates every year at, at budget, but, you know, are those the appropriate levels for, for those services? Or, you know, so that kind of assessment as well, I think, could be useful.
Okay, one thing I left out of my mayor's report is that Vice Mayor Meyer and I did meet with City Manager Howard and, and reviewed the evaluation and so forth. And one item in there was site visits to departments and whatnot, so I think that's kind of already in the queue. I apologize for not getting that circulated back to council. But, and then another item, and I'm partially mentioning this because Councilman Baylor mentioned an email from the manager regarding the police, the agenda item early, and really that should come from council if you'd like a report from the manager. It'd be more appropriate, I think, for all of council to just say you'd like an update there, and maybe that's a start on that discussion. There's clearly some will there, is that appropriate, council? Just basically, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I guess I'm of the personal opinion is that the manager knows we're here and if she needs our input on something, she's gonna ask.
Is that work, Councilman Schaefer? Susan?
I mean, I think a work session for, with departments, I think, would be really helpful. Then we'd have some lead time, we could get the information that we need ahead of time and do some research, like discuss with the department heads, you know, where they need more support or like what, I'm thinking specifically, too, of like the parts in our department as well, like there's been a lot of services cut, but over the last few years, so like understanding what those services are, revisiting them, are they important to the community? How much do they cost? So, I mean, I think work sessions, then the public can also be involved, could be important and will make us more informed going into the budget.
Okay, Susan and then Councilman Gard, did you? Okay, Councilman Gard?
I'm not sure where we ended up on getting a report from the manager on the deleted subject from tonight.
Can we do this, council? We got, between now and the next meeting, if you, could you maybe meet, just reach out to the manager directly and discuss it? And then maybe we could move on from there, just to kind of get an update on where we're at and.
So we're not gonna talk about any of this at all publicly. We can't have an uncomfortable conversation here that we'd like the community to get by. There's lots of contention in the community. This doesn't have to be a them-or-us deal.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll not have the discussion tonight because we took it off.
No, I'm not saying we have discussion tonight. I'm asking if we want, if we decided whether we're getting a report from the manager at the next meeting. That's what my question was about.
I think the manager's been in earshot here and she reported on the last agenda, so I would just touch base with the manager between. Okay, Helen, would you like to speak to this or, not to put you on the spot or anything, but?
I, I'm hearing two different directions and it's a little confusing for me. On one hand, we don't want to go beyond manager. We want manager to manage her departments, which is a great direction and I'm happy to do that. And then I hear you say we want to meet with departments and have a conversation around how departments are working, which is exactly what we were just discussing. So I'm, I'm, I'm feeling a little unclear. And, and maybe, maybe what we're saying is, is that we're just postponing difficult conversations with departments until a time when we've actually set it as an agenda and we know that we're gonna have the right people in the room and the conversation will be more informed. And if that's the case, then we're, I, I'm clearer. If, I just want to make sure I understand.
Councilman Gleason?
I just, the difficult conversations with department heads, co, they're gonna be with you and the department head. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, and, and I, I thought I understood or heard that there's an interest in having conversations with departments themselves before budget time to engage in any number of conversations that might be, or questions that might be of concern of council, which I don't know, maybe I'm just, I'm going on vacation, everyone. My brain might be somewhere else.
Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I, I think what we're, what, the way I understand it anyway, is that what I would be looking for with this department meetings is that the, the manager take us so that we're informed when we make, when we make a decision on the budget. So, you know, the, for example, the, the rubbish, you know, a good time to, maybe after they get their new equipment would be, would be to go out after they've had it for a week and can operate it to, to see that and get a, you know, get, just get information from them, not, I have no, no desire at all of telling them how they should run their department or even listening to complaints about their department. But if there's things that, that we need explained about what's coming up on their budget or, you know, there are council members, I'm sure, that have never stepped foot in the sewer treatment plant, have no idea what the streets people do, what do, you know, yeah, the streets, you know, what does that mean? What, what is their job duties? What, what do they do? Not, not necessarily to say that they should be doing this or they should be doing that, but just what do they do, you know, so that we can more intellectually just make decisions on the budget. And, and I would certainly want that to be led by the manager, not by any employees or department heads, but by, by our employee. I don't ever want to get into a discussion on how a department is operated unless the manager wants to ask opinion of, you know, what council feels about this or that, or you got some ideas for, for changing the structure of, of this department or all the departments, or like the previous manager was, was going into some, some new structure for things, then, then yeah, we can, we can talk about that structure. But if we're gonna talk about policy within a department, then we certainly need to have that policy before us and we need to know what the concern is with that policy, not just a open-ended discussion about.
Okay.
The department.
Yeah, I'll just bring this in for landing. Yeah, so the code is clear, the communications to departments goes through the manager and employee communications to the council goes through the manager. So, and that's, that's what I think council asks for of the manager is more site visits and tours and explanations.
Informational.
Yes, yes. And just to understand the operations and stuff. So, yes, Councilman Sherman?
Thank you. Again, I, I'm not sure the onsite visits are gonna be worth it unless we all commit. I will personally say that right now that I will commit and I think those are very important, but I think we should have work sessions before each council meeting in this coming summer when we can to just get some basic informational questions resolved. I think we could handle a couple departments within even one or two work sessions. No personnel discussion, that's totally between the manager, that's her job, not ours. But I would like some more information on regard, in regard to how and what the departments feel they need to operate successfully financially. I think the fee discussions is a great idea by Ann and that's it, you know, an hour before each meeting. If we're gonna do onsite tours, fine, but everybody needs to commit to do that. I stood there waiting for council to show up for years to onsite things and that doesn't happen. So, anyway, it's, it's Helen's job, she deserves a vacation. I think we should put this in the future agenda to discuss and, and we move forward from here.
Okay, let's leave that there. And then again, if any of the items in the memo that you want to have concerns with, I would just discuss those with the manager. So anything else for pending agenda? So we have, are we already to audience participation? Apologize, we had a request for a, for points north to come in and I was gonna try to give them a ten-minute warning so they could speak, very audience comments, so I'm gonna do that now real quick. And, and then we can take audience comments. So audience participation. Ah, if you want to just approach the microphone and introduce yourself and, and you can address the council. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Paul. Thank you for having me in here. Just a couple of things, I just wanted to introduce myself in person to all of you. I've talked to a lot of people over emails and phone calls and all these things over the, the past few months. And so, anyhow, wanted to make a formal introduction, this is who I am, real person. Anyway, I also just wanted to thank the, the city and the council for the resolution that you all put together for us, for the Forest Service permit that we did, that we applied for and were granted. And so, anyhow, very exciting for us. Also wanted to thank the city for everything you've done as far as the COVID policies and vaccinations. We're, we're three weeks into our season and we're still operating and so far, so good. So it's, it's pretty exciting, you know? We didn't know if we'd even make it this far. There were some other heli-ski operations that shut down immediately due to COVID outbreaks, so really appreciate town's involvement and support. And one thing I just wanted real quick was to come down here and address you all and let you know, just bring to attention, I think it's, it's been sent around and it is in the Cordova Times, I believe, as well, but there is a heli-ski permit comment period. but there is a heli-ski permit comment period that has begun, and the more people that we can get to submit positive comments and support for Points North and our pursuing the, the use of the public lands, are, it's hugely important to us as a business, it, it opens up a whole lot of opportunities, and I think it ensures success for our business for the next 10 years, which is the permit period, it gives us a lot of access closer to town, which kind of impacts our business and I think the, the local community as well in a lot of ways, and so I just want to let everyone know that there's a total open-door policy on my end, if there's questions or thoughts or concerns regarding any of that, and, you know, you've, you've all committed to being a one-heli-operator town, which, which we only benefits us, and so we really appreciate that, and would love to continue the relationship that we've had for the last 23 years, and I just want to instill in all of you that, that that is my intention, is to continue to communicate openly with the community and, and partake in any way that we can, to be a staple here for another 20-plus years, so, anyhow, that's kind of all I have, just wanted to make an introduction and, and say thank you and let you know that my, my door is open, so.
Thank you.
That's it, thanks.
Councilman Allison.
Yeah, thanks for, for coming in, is there a link or a website somewhere for that comment?
Yeah, there is, and, and I was going to get you guys, we're drafting up a, kind of a whole document that I was going to submit to the city and then, and then also.
Almost a clerk gets it, we can get it in the Cordova conversation, maybe?
Awesome, great.
Okay, thank you, I'll just remind the, the audience online to call in for audience comments, that number is 253-6202, and are there other, other audience comments here in the room, yeah, if you could just approach and state your name for the record, please?
Ken Jones, 514 Sunnyside Drive, like to thank all you guys for supporting the harbor resolutions for the grants, that's awesome, I was reading the report from staff and it sounds like there's some exciting things happening with the EDA stuff, and I commend the staff for finding that and pursuing it, that one slipped by me, so I didn't even know about it, I'm glad that they found it and sounds like a pretty awesome opportunity for us, as far as the forest service lease that you're about to discuss in executive session, I don't want to have my position, I guess, construed into being anti-forest service at all, I think the forest service is a very important part of our community, you know, they've been here for 100 years, like you heard earlier, it's, it's not about trying to shut them down or limit their mission at all, everything they do is important, you know, my business personally benefits from their cabins, I run clients to their cabins, that's, I make money doing it, it's not that I want to shut them down at all, in fact, I want to, you know, help them in certain ways, and I just feel that that location is an ideal and suitable spot for a floating fuel dock, and, and their boats can be accommodated in a way that still supports their mission elsewhere in the harbor, I mean, if they need priority parking at the bottom of a ramp and we give them some space next to the harbor master for their building, we could do that, if they need to, you know, work out a deal with the state, the, I talked to the guy, he's a friend of mine in Juneau that does the state leases, he said he'd be amicable to it, it sounded like a great idea to him, so, I don't understand why it can't even be an option, and, you know, 55 years for a buck, that, you know, that's pretty cheap, and $1,000 a year is pretty cheap too, for three vessels taking up that much real estate, so, it's not that I'm anti-forest service, and I want to, wanted to clarify that, it's, I just, you know, I'm pro-industry and I feel like everything can be accommodated in our harbor basin, so, thank you.
Just checking the phones here, it doesn't look like we have any call-ins, audience comments in the room? Yeah, if you could just state your name for the record.
Steve Namitz, District Ranger, US Forest Service.
Okay, enter the mic, please, just for the councilman online.
Steve Namitz, District Ranger, US Forest Service.
Thank you.
So, I apologize earlier for kind of getting sidetracked in my comments, so really my comments today are, is, is to ask you to exercise option one and, and authorize the city manager to go into negotiations with us on a new and future lease, so, that's my only comment, thanks.
Thank you. Other audience comments on agenda, or just in general? Okay, hearing none, council comments, I'll start with Councilman Allison.
Okay, I know we've got some discussion about the harbor thing here pretty soon, but, see, we've got all kinds of plans and we're talking about spending a bunch of millions of dollars for, for the harbor, I, I hope that the, all users, including fuel and state and forest service are all, are all in those plans, and I know there's several options for several of those plans, but certainly hope the Harbor Commission and the people involved with those are, are, have a plan for, for all of those things coming forward. Just have a thought on the consent calendar, I know that, I guess this is the only time we have to comment on things in the consent calendar, but the consent calendar items get ripped off sometimes on, on comments, you know, some people come from the audience because they've got an item on the agenda and it gets stuck on the consent calendar and nobody says a darn word about it, I mean, it gets approved because most items, that's why you put them on the consent calendar, is that there's little, little communication on it that, that happens, but just like to point that out, that those items are, are fully supported when we pass a consent calendar, and, and sometimes I've pulled things off of the consent calendar just so they can be, get some special attention, so, anyway, appreciate all the work we're doing on, on all those grants and such, and hopefully we, we can get a portion of them and get a chunk of money to, to get some work going on our, on our harbor and, and hope the plan is, is all good there, thanks to staff for, for all the work they've been doing on, on things, I really appreciate the, the work that our medical teams, both Lonka and CCMC, working together on the vaccinations and the testing, we're truly lucky to be in Cordova, there's a lot of people all over the country that can't, can't get vaccinations, and we're, we're already past 50% in Cordova, and I think that's an admirable thing, with very little conflicts, I'm sure that there probably are some things that we're not seeing, going behind the scenes, but they've been handling everything perfectly well, and I'd like to express thanks to the, the manager for, for a few additional emails we've been getting on, on different topics, I appreciate that as information, not always anything that needs to be replied to, but just having the information is, is good, which I think Councilmember Baylor was referring to earlier, if, if, if there's a, something out there that the public knows about that, that would help us to, to understand maybe a little bit, and, and I do appreciate those emails, and the written report, I, I appreciate that being in the, in the packet too, having, having some, some report from the manager in there is good, and, and with that, have a good vacation, you've earned a, you've earned your two weeks off and, and enjoy your, enjoy your time away.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I'll just go through my list in order, Councilman Gleason, comments?
Echo Dave's comments, and just say if those Navy guys really want to blow something up, we got a lot of harbor seals nobody's going to miss.
[laughing]
And have a good vacation, Helen, you definitely deserve a good vacation.
Thank you, I'll even take a bad vacation right now.
And thanks for that clarification too, Councilman Allison, the informational emails, I didn't hear that right, Councilman Baylor, comments?
Yeah, I would like to echo the comment about getting the updated emails from the city manager, appreciate that, and, yeah, do have a good vacation, I'd like to give a shout out for item 10 on the consent calendar, there's a resolution through the final plat for Scott subdivision, I just want to bring it out to attention that planning zoning did a lot of work on this, especially Mark Hall was a huge help, he's been a real asset to that commission and to Lays, and Lays did some outstanding work on it, and it's another example of how the city of Cordova kind of bends over backwards in accommodating to people that own land and want a subdivide and start developing, a lot of places you wouldn't have been able to get this kind of a subdivision through, they would have wanted much more engineering, much more design, phase one, phase two, so, I've said this to following people, sometimes running for the council or different things, they say the city needs to help, you know, make affordable land, well, here's a prime example of how the city does that, and, well, I think a shout out to Lays, the planning and zoning commission, and Mark Hall is very well deserved on that, I also just kind of bring up a former planning zoning member and a great activist, Danny Don Showstedt, is going through some rough times right now, so your thoughts and prayers for him, and maybe it'd be nice if we got a card out from council and planning zoning and all the signers or something, I think he would appreciate that, so consider that there, and that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Sherman.
Sure, can I echo everything that Ben said before, and Helen, you do deserve that vacation, I really wanted to just mention Heather Brandon, who I think has done an extremely incredible job of keeping everybody informed and really working with the industry, and I'm just, I'm so impressed, when you look around the state at what's happened with the fishing industry around the state, and you think about how well we did here, and I think a lot of it has to do with Heather and her demeanor and the way she's interacted and been proactive with everyone in the industry and the state, and, boy, she's a, just a real asset to the community, and I don't think she gets the, the things that she deserves, and I appreciate the fact that the Forest Service Ranger came and spoke with us tonight too, I'm hoping that we can find some really compatible agreements for everybody, our harbor is our bloodline, lifeline, and we need to make it work for everyone, and there's just so much involved to it that I think it just, it's all of us to make it work for, for all of us, and the only other thing I would kind of say was, I think that next month, April 2nd, the museum is going to have this awesome art show of a kind of appreciation to all our first responders, and I've seen some of the artwork coming in, and it really is going to be a very special thing, and I'm hoping that we can get some statewide recognition for it, because everybody in this community has done an awfully good job at trying to keep us all safe, and I appreciate that, and I'm out.
Councilman Garg.
I'd like to vocalize my disappointment in my fellow council members' decision tonight not to have a discussion on items that were clearly cited in the charter that says we're have every right to do, that tonight's discussion was not about, tonight's proposed discussion was not about beating anybody or any department up, it was about making sure we're getting the function we wanted out of our department, it was just a simple discussion about that, and if we can't sit down here at this table between us and have a civil discussion about where we'd like to see things going in Cordova, how do we expect our citizens to do it? Go look at social media and see what's going around on social media as we all savage, savage each other over these issues like this, so it really does not seem much like leadership to me, and it doesn't seem much like an open and honest democracy to where we can sit down and discuss anything, we need to, so we can all live together and make society work, so that's my comment for tonight, thank you.
Vice Mayor Meyer.
Um, yeah, I saw those comments before me, I, I thought it was a discussion that we were completely in our right to have, and I thought, you know, this group, this body that represents the whole community would be able to have that discussion, it's how it lands, and unfortunately, I've already gotten a message of someone saying, I knew they would do that, that's sad to hear, I mean, I, it's, it's hard to hear, it's hard to hear from people that they are afraid to say anything, and they would never publicly say anything, I really thought it could be a positive, turning things into a positive, you know, like, let's move forward, we're a community, we can do things together, unfortunately, it doesn't seem like we can, not to shame, but that's how it rolls, and that's probably how it's always been, so, I am very disappointed, but there's a lot of good things that happened in this meeting, staff has been working really hard, gained a lot of grants out, Helen, you deserve a much needed vacation, I hope you're able to really disconnect and relax on your vacation, you deserve it, and keep moving forward, there are good things that are happening, and I think we can continue doing some good things.
Hey, Councilman Schaefer.
Hi, yeah, I want to say thank you to all the candidates that ran for seats during this election, it was awesome to see so much involvement and to see the high voter turn out, so let's make that a tradition moving forward, I'm really grateful and excited about the opportunity to serve on council for another term, so, thanks everyone, I'd also really like to thank staff for their hard work, I really appreciated the memo that documented the different funding sources that were, are being pursued for the harbor, so that was really, that was really helpful and that was really great, and I also really appreciated on the land use map how there were the bullet points from what was changed from year to year, so just putting in that little extra detail was really helpful for me, and I'd like to thank, yeah, our incident management team and our medical providers here in town, and encourage anyone who can go and get vaccinated when it's available to you, so, thanks everyone, and Helen, enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so, before we go into executive session, I just want to remind, especially stakeholders on that item, that we'll go into executive session, but then we're going to come out of executive session and council's going to discuss and take action on that item, so I'd encourage you to stick around a little bit, just out in the foyer maybe, and then you can come back in when we reopen the meeting, so I'm going to recess for five minutes, so allow us to, if we can have a motion to go into executive session, that'll take a brief recess to clear the room, and, where is your letter?
What's that?
Because I thought it was on page 69.
I'm assuming we'll get a text on what line to call in?
Besides Councilman Baylor, and I know.